All right, we're live. Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by Greg and Amanda Kilwin, founders of Get Oiling. Hello, guys.
Hello.
We also have Julie and Colin from our team. Hi.
Hey, everybody.
It's always fun to have you guys here. We're always excited to come out and see where you are from, where are you coming from in the world? Let us know in the comments if you're here live. If you'd like to join us on a future live call, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. Get on this list and join us on an upcoming live call. These are calls we do every week at noon Eastern. They are 100% free to the entire community of Teen Young Living. If you want to come and learn how you can be more effective in how you grow. And of course, if you want to learn a little bit more about how you can use Get Oiling to do that, then this is the place to be. It's always a fun little party. And where are we coming in from today? Let's open up that chat and see. Got some slides to walk through. We're going to be going through actual walkthrough as well from the VO today. Today is a VO topic. We got Michigan, North Carolina, Philly, Minnesota, South Dakota, PA, Kansas City, BC, Canada, Wyoming, Oklahoma City, New York here, BC, Fargo, and Florida here for the team. We are always thrilled to have you from wherever you are in the world. So today, we're talking about how to import and update your Get Oiling system using your YLVO files. We're going to get into what exactly that means if maybe, maybe you're even new to Young Living and you're not even sure what the heck that stuff means. We're going to go over all of that today in some detail and do a live walkthrough. So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and stop video, guys. If we could do that, please. We're going to share screen and make a nice little recording here for YouTube. All right. So today, as mentioned, we are going to be talking about how to import and upload your virtual office file so that you can communicate with your people easy and simply. All right. So today, we're going to talk about importing those contacts from the VO. We're going to talk about when to import and how to use your import to streamline your communication. We're going to have a couple of website reviews or live work reviews today, and we've got Q and A and support. So if you come here today looking for help, if you need assistance with anything, if you've got questions, please go ahead and add those to the Q and A. This is a live work section. It's not just a time to sit and learn. It's a time to take action and get the help that you need to move forward. So please feel free, add those to the Q and A so we can be helping you throughout the call. And as mentioned before, if you want to join us on a future call live on Zoom, if you're watching this as a replay in the future, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. And if you want to have one-on-one help on a live call, like two people will have the opportunity to have today. You can go to getoiling.com/websitereview and schedule a time for yourself on an upcoming call to have dedicated space to work together, to scroll through, look at what you're doing, and really dig in and work together to overcome whatever it is that you're working on or maybe stuck on in your business. All right, now a question for you guys. Let me know in the chat. Have you uploaded your virtual office file into your Get Oiling account yet? Is that something that you've done? Have you taken your contacts from your Young Living business and uploaded them into your Get Oiling account? See, a lot of yeses here. Follow-up question. How often do you do this? If you've done it once, how often are you uploading your file? Once, three times, a long time ago? Okay. A few times a year? Yes, but only once? Okay. Haven't figured out how to do it regularly? Once so far? All right. So we want to be doing this once a week, I would say. And if, at the very least, if you're just getting started and you've only got a couple of members, then maybe twice a month. But as your team grows, as you start getting closer to silver, as you're leading, absolutely, this is something you want to be doing once a week. I know leaders who do this once a day. And I think that there are certainly reasons that are working for them as to why they pull these and what actions they take in their business based on those things. We're not going to get into that minutia today. We're going to show you the basics. All right. So this is getting it done for the first time and then what you can do on an ongoing basis to keep everything up to date. All right. So here's what we're going to cover today. First, we're going to talk about how to download your report from your virtual office. We're going to talk about what details from that report you want to upload because everything does not upload into Get Oiling specifically. We want to talk about our initial and maintenance uploads and one specific option. If you want to, basically, if you wanted to be able to send out a quick welcome message to someone who's new in your organization, no matter where in your organization, I'm going to show you how you can do that today. And then we'll talk a little bit about strategic communication with those reports. All right. So real quick, as mentioned, some leaders pull these reports every day, some once a week, some a couple of times a week. There's a lot of different ways that you can pull and use these reports to see who has rank advanced and to see, you know, who has one month without orders. So you can help them make sure that they don't lose their Subscribe to Save or Loyalty Rewards status, right? There's lots of different things you can do with this, but today, we're going to be focusing on the report whose field will connect one-on-one with your Good Oiling Contact Manager, right? There's a lot of data you can pull from your VO, but there's only so many things that come straight into your account. So once you've performed these steps, I'm going to show you today, you can use additional virtual office reports for outreach to do's, notes, et cetera. So for instance, if you have all of this stuff, if you have all of this stuff that I'm going to show you today, upload it into your account and up to date and correct, then if you wanted to go back to your VO and pull a report for people who, you know, have one month without order or something like that, or maybe some other specialized reports, you're already going to have all of those contacts in your contact manager. And chances are for the finer tuned reports, you're going to be performing unless you are a diamond or higher, more than likely, it's just going to be a handful that you can go and select, right? You don't have to perform and upload every single time you want to take action on a VO report. So we're going to talk about getting the baseline done here today so that the other things become more possible. All right. So let's talk about this real quick. Now, for the preservation of safety or safety of security of people's contact information and safeguarding that contact information and personal details, this is something that has been anonymized and I'm using screenshots so that nobody's downline is shown here, right? That's why it's kind of a tricky thing. We haven't done this very often. All right. So first, you want to make sure you're logged in, of course, to your Young Living account. If you're in the US or Canada, it's going to look pretty similar to what you see over here on the left where you log in. And then you have the option to go to your virtual office. If you are outside of the US or Canada, you're just going to log in like you would normally log into your VO. And you're going to look for my organization. When you click my organization, you're going to come over here and you'll see, and actually, this part on the right-hand side of the screen, where we talk about how to actually get the report out of your system, that is something that you'll actually see inside of the contact import page in Get Oiling as well. So when we say that we want to grab the report, you're going to see this pop-up here. And I have a list of these that I'll show you on the next slide. But we want to actually select the specific columns that we want to have pulled into our account or into our Get Oiling account here. All right. So member ID, that's actually going to be their member number, right? Their account name is going to be their name, first name, last name, or business name if they're signed up as a business. Has subscriptions is whether or not they have literally have subscriptions, right? So if they're on Subscribe to Save, if they have an active subscription, this is going to show in your Good Oiling system whether they have that or not, which is really cool. And there's a way to search for that. Did you guys know that? Did you know that if you're doing your upload correctly, you can filter your contacts for who has a subscription and who does not? And you can send out or schedule specific communication or give yourself a to-do based on that information. It's pretty cool. We can say enrolled, where it checks enrolled here, that's going to give their anniversary date, their sponsor ID, enroller ID, and then of course, their contact information, email address, phone, and then customer type. And this is going to display as customer or brand partner. Okay. Now, these are the only things that we want to have checked for the purpose of uploading into our Get Oiling account. And don't worry if you're frantically taking notes. We've got a PDF version of this that I believe went out to you right before this call. And we'll have it in the download section of this video recording on YouTube as well. So you can have this whole list of things to go through. All right. So these are the things that we want to have checked. And your file, when you download it, is going to look a little something like this. This is a star account that has three customers and no brand partners, including the star member themselves who enrolled the other three people. Okay? Now, we're going to upload this file. This is a CSV file. We're uploading this to Get Oiling. Now, there's a number of different ways to find the place that you'll have your upload on your dashboard. You'll see that you have options here under what would you like to do today? You can click import contacts. You could also go to contact settings and click import. You could search import in the search bar in the top left of your screen. Or you can click the little question mark and click in import, type in import, and you're going to see an article on how to do this as well. And then you're going to land on our contact import page where we do actually have a little step-by-step walkthrough here that shows you what to do. Now, is it, you know, does it make a huge difference if you download a report that has all of the stuff versus the ones that I just showed you? I mean, if you checked all of the boxes, they'd all be there, but it might get a little confusing, you know, for you to know what goes where. So I really, really recommend that you use this list here. Make sure your box looks like this before you download and you're going to have the easiest time possible actually uploading this into the system. Okay? So we're going to follow the instructions on this page. We're going to select choose file. We're going to add the file. And then we're going to say I have permission to contact these people. And then we're going to correct and verify our upload fields. So this is what this should look like for you when you upload this. Their member ID is going to show up under member number. Their name is under account name. You've got has subscription and it'll say yes or no. Membership anniversary will show up right there next to enrolled. Sponsor number, member number, enroller number, the email, the address. There will be two fields for address, just FYI, like I mentioned, we are using a not actual whole VO file here. There will typically be an address to field. So like, you know, unit two or apartment 4G or something like that. Just make sure that you have address one and address two if there are two columns like that. Finally, we go to city, state postal code, of course, just making sure that those are correct. And then, and then we want to, of course, continue here. We've got our mobile phone number. And then finally, our contact type. And this is where it's going to show whether somebody is a brand partner or a customer. Quick note, as of the time of filming this right now, we are not a full year past when the, the big changes were made to the system in Young Living in 2020. And that, or sorry, 2021, and that would have made basically a lot of people who were brand partners who were not maybe qualified by today's qualification status for brand partner may actually show up in here. But if you're uploading your VO file consistently, this is going to be really kind of taking care of itself. Okay? Now, finally, a little bit further down on the page, we want to tag all of our imported contacts. Now, there are a couple of ways that you can filter that our system already recognizes for things like customer and brand partner. But if you're somebody who's using Get Oiling to, to get leads, if you've got lead magnets out there trying to attract people to you, to your business. If you have an oily adjacent business and you use your contact manager for those leads as well, if you sell a course or a program, basically, if you have any other non-oily business that you want to use your same contact manager for, I really recommend that you put a couple of tags here like Young Living or Downline and have those be something that you add every time you upload. Okay. So that way, it's really easy for you to just very quickly go and say, okay, these are all my Young Living people. And then, of course, if you have leads, they're coming from other places, right? Sometimes they'll, you know, sometimes those things get mixed, but you do want to make sure that you're communicating with the right folks. So that'll make that easier for you, big picture. And then for maintenance imports, and I'll show you what this looks like at the close of the presentation here and actually walk you through how this is done. If you wanted to, maybe you're doing permission-based marketing, like I've taught in a previous weekly work session, where you want to give people the opportunity to say, yes, I want your resources before you just start sending them all of your educational stuff every week just because they're new in your organization, right? We do want to give people the opportunity to say yes. So if you want to do that, if you're doing your upload every week, then all you have to do is add a temporary tag to those newly created contacts. So I would just give it, you know, today's date. And then filter for those people, send them that invitation to get the communication from you and then go and remove the tag. But there's also other ways that you could use this for newly created contacts. If you are running some of those specific VO reports, like finding folks who have rank advanced or people who are ranked at star or whatever, then, then you can add tags here for that purpose as well for outreach. Again, we're not going to get into those weeds today, but there is an option here to add those tags to newly created folks. All right. And then finally, here, these four options, they're not going to be the same for you every single time, except when you are uploading from the VO, always autocorrect the capitalization because Young Living does currently export your VO file in all caps. And let's just say you're using the contact first name tag when you're communicating with somebody. If their contact is in all caps in your contact manager, it's going to look like you're screaming at them in email and that's not a nice look. So autocorrect those. In terms of only importing new contacts, the second one, that is a little bit more advanced. Again, that's going to be more for a specific type of activity. If you're wanting to keep your VO up to date always, then don't check the second one, right? Because you always want to be making sure that you're updating contact information if they are on a subscription now. You want to be able to see that they are now, maybe if they didn't used to be. So you can keep all of that up to date. So a lot of the times, I would not actually recommend for the VO file, checking the second box here. You do have the option to only update selected fields, the third one, and then deduplicating by mobile number. Basically, I recommend the first and the last ones here as an all-the-time thing. The asterisk here, the sort of if or but. Sometimes you might have contacts who utilize the same phone number. It's, it's kind of an outlier situation, but you could get unexpected results from how you upload and how that works. More often than not, I don't think you're going to have an issue with this. I would just go ahead and as a default, when you're uploading from the VO, check the first and the last boxes here. And then, of course, if you need to modify or correct contact information from previous uploads, you can also choose to include specific, specific ones here if you want to. Let's see, Allison, you had a couple of questions. Okay, Melissa, better day of the week to upload? People join Young Living any day of the week and people place orders any day of the week. So whatever you do, I would just be consistent with it. So if you're going to do it on a Monday, do it every Monday. If you're going to do it once a week, do it, do it once a week, not once every two weeks, that kind of thing so that you're consistent. Allison asks, I always check the four. Do I need to every time? I would go with the first and the last one. And then can you give a specific example when you check only import new contacts and the third one? So not really. I can't think of one off the top of my head. We could maybe get into some details about that on maybe a future, more advanced call about this. But right now, we're really just talking about the basics of keeping everything up to date as it is current in your VO. And then, of course, maintaining that on an ongoing basis. All right. So to finish our import, once we've got our tags added, we've selected the options. Then, of course, we're going to click start import. We'll wait for the confirmation and it's going to tell you that it's processed your contacts. And it's added them. And then what you can do here is click the contacts tag with the all tags. In this case, I did add tags, Young Living and I think Downline. Yes, I did. And so you can actually click and see the folks who were uploaded here. And you can actually see that, you know, two of these folks are on Subscribe to Save, two of them are not. They're all tagged with Downline and Young Living. You can see who their sponsor is. You can see the address, the phone number, see that you can text them, email them, chat them, and so on. So let's talk about some of what you can now do if you are performing that upload on at one time and then on an ongoing weekly basis. First, we can filter for Subscribe to Save. So we can actually see who is on Subscribe to Save. If you've got folks who are your customers who are not signed up for a subscription, once a week, you can go through, find those people and assign yourself a to-do to reach out to that person, set up a care call, ask some questions, you know, see how they're doing, see how you can help them grow in their wellness or whatever their goals are with using product. And then, of course, help them see why Subscribe to Save is a no-brainer. You could schedule your oiliversary emails this way as well because this information is now in here. You can send out brand partner specific information. So if you wanted to, maybe there are, maybe there are calls coming up and you want to send an email out to, I think right now, there's still Monday Night Ignite calls, right? So you want to let all of your brand partners know, hey, did you know you can invite your prospects to these informational calls every Monday? And so you can just schedule emails out. You filter for your brand partners and then schedule an email out to go out every week, reminding them, hey, there's going to be a call on Monday, right? You could also filter by enroller or sponsor to reach out personally to your personals and schedule care calls. If you're maybe taking care of folks who are in someone else's personal list, you could do that as well. And then, of course, you can filter all of your customers and brand partners to share your vault and your resources, your educational stuff that you've put together to serve your people. So I want to take you guys over to see an upload and an update in action. So you can actually see what it looks like to go and get this done. So I am currently logged in to Jane's account here. So what we're going to do first is, is go ahead and go over here to import contacts. I'm going to scroll down here and choose my file. Now, this is the one that I've already uploaded from the VO. I have permission to contact these people. I'm going to verify here, member number, name, has subscription, anniversary, sponsor, enroller, email address, city, state, postal code, country, mobile phone, contact type. All right, perfect. I'm going to tag all of these people pretending like this is maybe the first time I've ever done this. We're going to do, we're going to make this one Young Living and I'll do another one and call it Downline since this is everyone in the Downline for Jane. I'm going to autocorrect capitalization of names and addresses and I'm going to deduplicate by mobile phone number and start the import. Okay. And now I'm going to view the contacts with all tags. And there's our four. We could see who has a subscription, who doesn't. Let's go over here. So Jane has three customers, right? Because that's who we just uploaded her whole VO file. This is Jane. These are her three customers. Now, Jane's three customers, out of the three, one has a subscription and the other don't. So for Mama Jones and Lillian something here, we're going to actually go and set it to do to reach out to offer a care call to get on Subscribe to Save. And I want to make sure that I do that on Monday because I'm about to go out of town for the weekend. This is a coaching activity, actually. So what I'm going to do here, this is follow-up with a, there's so many here. Okay, I'm going to reach out to, just going to pretend like it's this one. All right. So I'm going to add that to do. And now I'm going to be reminded to reach out to Mama Jones because she's not on Subscribe to Save and she really needs to know how much more she could be getting out of her membership if she was on a subscription, right? I'm going to tell her, you know, because it's Mama, it's Jane's mom. I'm going to let her know that I've got over $100 in credits to get whatever I want in terms of product because of the previous product purchases I made. And that's something that you can have too. Mama, wouldn't you like to get some free product? So I'm going to make sure that I reach out to Mama. And of course, on my dashboard, I'll be able to see when I come down here, I will have a to-do that'll be coming up. Well, let's see, on, on Monday, right? So I'll have that to do there. So that's what that looks like. Now, let's pretend that someone in my organization's just enrolled someone, actually. So we're going to go and the next week, the following week, we're going to do another upload. So I'm going to import. And so I've already got my upload, my file here, but here's my new one, right? So that was last week. Now it's this week. I'm going to import this and update my VO. And oh, look, there's somebody new, right? Now, if you've got a lot of people in your organization, you might not be keeping track of the numbers so closely. But I am going to go ahead and put Young Living, put Downline. And then over here, I'm going to say new member 2172022. And I'm going to autocorrect. I'm going to deduplicate. And I'm going to start import. Okay. So here's the one with the new tags. Perfect. And if I've done this the way that I've just shown you, if you've got multiples of these, then you'll actually see multiple here. And so what you'll do is you will, in this case, so you have a couple of options here. If you're someone who, like maybe if you're one of my clients, you're following the permission marketing system, then what you would be doing here is going to bolt contact actions for these contacts. And you would be applying the permission marketing campaign here to all of these people, right? If you don't do that, then what I would do is just send a quick email, maybe use a saved reply for this and send an email that says, you know, hey, you may not know me, but I just wanted to make sure that you know that we've got some great resources for you on your journey. I'm not going to bombard you with anything that you don't want, but if you would like to get our resources, click here and you can get them. And when we say click here, we'll actually send them to a landing page where they can opt in, get in the member area, you know, get tagged with newsletter, that kind of thing. So you can permission marketing that. Or you could just send out something very personal, right? So this is, you know, her name is somebody's friend, whatever her name is, you know, so hey, welcome to Young Living. Just wanted to let you know I'm someone that's here to support you. If you ever need anything, just hit reply to this email, right? So you could do that. And you could send that to as many people as you want to at the same time. But then importantly, of course, after you have done this, you can go to actions. You can go to bulk contact actions and then I'm going to remove that temporary tag. Because I don't need it anymore, right? So I've performed that action. I've reached out to that person. And now there's just another person who is in my list. Now, let's talk real quick about some of the things that we can do with these contacts. I'm going to show you. Let's go find, I showed you Grandma Jones who has a subscription. So this is her contact card. What we'll do here is if we go over to edit, you can see a number of different things, right? So you can see that we have our tags here. You can edit her tags if you want to. You can add any additional information for her that you want. Her anniversary date is right here. You can see whether or not she has a subscription. Again, this is stuff that you don't have to do. Your system will do it for you if you're uploading it the way that I shared with you today. You can put any other kind of information in here. And now if we want to go to, I'm just going to go to my contacts and go get, go to filter. And I can look for contact type. So let's maybe find brand partners and filter. And there are the brand partners. So if I wanted to send out an email about Monday Night Ignite, I could do that right here and send it off to just the brand partners. Right? If I wanted to, let me reset my filters. Maybe it is the month of October and I want to filter for people who have oiliversaries in the month of October. I'm going to filter. And I actually don't have any for October. Let's find, maybe it's September. Let's find one in September. Voila. Okay. So Lillian has a September, a September oiliversary. So what we'll do is, is we will schedule an email to go out to those folks with an oiliversary this month, right? Pretty, pretty cool. So, so that is basically it. There's a lot more that you can do. Like I mentioned, you can filter for whether or not, oh, here's one. Let's reset the filters. We'll do one more here. We go to filter and I just want to find people who are not, there are Young Living and they are, let's see, they're a customer, but they are not on a subscription. Let's filter. Voila. There's my customer who is not on subscription, who's not on Subscribe to Save. So I can reach out to her and make a point to talk with her about loyalty rewards. All right. So I know we've got a bunch of questions. So let's go ahead and get to those. If you've got them, please make sure that you put your questions in the Q and A so that they don't get missed. Because if it's in the chat, we might miss it. Okay. Jackie says, if we leave all the boxes checked on an import, specifically the background information, will the update take out any notes we have in the contacts background info box? No, in the background info, stuff gets added, right? So if you add more stuff to it, like Greg, is that right? Like if you have notes, like it doesn't replace what you already have?
Yeah. So I've been, when you're just importing from the VO, just pulling the file right out of there, there is no notes field that's included. I don't think they include that or have an option for that. The only way that it would do anything with your background information is if you select, like in, let's say you have a different file. Maybe you added a column to the CSV called, or to your import file called notes. And then you select background info when you're importing, then you've made, that's when you would, you know, that's where I would start to overwrite and replace some stuff. But that doesn't happen as of course, the normal part of the Young Living import process.
Yes. And this is why, like I really wanted to make sure that we specified, these are the fields that you really want to focus on when you're these are the fields that you really want to focus on when you're up, when you're uploading from the VO. Because you could see like, oh, well, maybe I'll just put that into background info, or I'll put it here, I'll put it there, and you could wind up changing something that you don't want to change on the contact. So when you do your upload, try to focus on the stuff that is, that, that does correspond directly with Get Oilings system. And then do your additional ones. And let's just say, for instance, you pull a report from your VO. You want to find people who I keep using months without order, but, but, you know, just to make sure that they get to keep their, you know, their loyalty reward status, then you're going to filter everyone who, you know, and this is a VO thing, right? Jackie, you know how to do that. I, maybe we get to do a deep dive on this one day. I don't know how we do it for privacy purposes, but, but, you know, you pull a report from the VO that is just people that have, that are one month without order, just one month without order. And, and you want to upload those people. You're going to, in that case, you're only going to add a tag to those people, right? So you're just going to add the tag, you know, temporary tag, you know, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, one MWO, or something like that, and then you're going to do that outreach. But more often than not, unless you have a gigantic organization, you could also just take that list and go check those people off. Search, check, search, check, search, check, the people that are already in your contact manager. And then just, you know, send whatever communication you want to send to them, and you don't have to do the whole upload. In most cases where we're looking at people who have rank advanced, if you want to send a nice little graphic, you know, congrats on reaching star, or congrats on reaching executive. You know, we're only really ever going to have a handful of those, even at the higher ranks, on a given week. So, I mean, if you're doing it monthly, maybe, maybe this becomes more voluminous. But, but yeah, so, so I would, I would err on the side of doing the upload like we've showed in today, but then use your contact manager to check the boxes of the people and then send the communication. Because a lot of tags are things that will change over time, right? So if somebody's new, they're not new forever. If they're star, they're not star forever, that kind of thing. So, yeah, this will keep you from potentially deleting any information like background info. All right, can we add our personal to-do items and give it a numerical value? Nozella, that's a good question. Your personal to-do items, if you make yourself a contact, that's a really great thing that you can do if you want to give yourself stuff to do. Make a contact for yourself and get oiling, and then you can give yourself to-dos for any given day. And that value, the numerical value that you saw, those are coaching activities. And so I would just kind of read through and see what of those things kind of apply to that specific activity that you're performing, so that you can get that credit with your digital upline coach and see that, that progress bar move throughout the week. Joanne, oh, good question. What happens when someone was, that was your downline, goes inactive and drops off the VO? If they're in your contact manager, they're in your contact manager. If they said yes to hearing from you and they haven't opted out, then they're still there to hear from you, and that's actually a very good thing. So if you're doing this on an ongoing basis and you do this for several years, you'll eventually have a fair amount of folks who are technically in your system, you know, who wouldn't show up if you pulled, well, there, there are ways to pull your VO from way further back, but it's just really, it's kind of complicated and really tedious. So if you're keeping this maintenance in place, and you're always letting new people know, hey, I've got resources, would you like them? Would you like to be a part of this community? Let the people who say yes, say yes, and then love on those people and keep them close to you, and they won't drop off, right? But yeah, if, if, if folks do drop off, then one of the things that you're able to do is, you know, is filter again for people, you know, who are customers. I think, I mean, Young Living doesn't give the inactive, like, that's not a thing that they show currently with the VO download. So it's not going to change the status necessarily. What I would just focus on is, you know, maybe some of the other reports, like, you know, when's the last time they placed an order, pulling those names, or the, or maybe excluding the ones who aren't tagged for that thing. So a lot of different options you can do there, but it's a good thing that you have them in your system still, because you could always keep in contact so that you can reactivate them. All right, Paula, oh, this is, this is a fun question. What do you do when you have seven hundred and eighty-six new leads so far? From your, from your Get Oiling Lead Magnet, landing pages that have gone viral? Paula, call me. You create a plan to reach out to them with topics they're indicated they're interested in. I'm working on a brand partner course, how I'm reaching out, building relationships with my new leads. Paula, we're going to bring you on here in a couple of weeks, but also call me, let's talk about that. You just, something went viral and you got seven hundred and eighty-six new leads in Get Oiling. We need to talk, okay? That's incredible. That is absolutely incredible. Congratulations on whatever you're doing. Yeah, everybody wants to know what that lead magnet is, Paula. We'll talk about it. Well, we're going to do a whole work session on, on this, you genius. Okay, Vicky, any way to get a report on customers that are no longer active? So Vicky, the only way I know how to do this currently is to, oh dear, I may, Jackie, I may need you for this, is to, you're, you're basically going into your VO, and you are going back and basically looking at your account as of a month in the past, right? So you're basically going and seeing, like, you know, I want to look at my account in January of twenty twenty or something like that, and then you can pull a report from that view, right? So it's like by a month and a year. So there's that. But for people who are active, if you want, if you're wanting to filter for people who are inactive, basically all you need to do is pull a VO file of all your active customers, right? And then tag them when you upload them, and then exclude that tag when you're pulling from the bigger group, so that you can then isolate and figure out who those people are who don't have that active tag, and then do whatever it is that you wanted to do with or for those folks. Allison, can you give more examples as to add tags on imports? Curious on how that would work. I, I would, there's not really a lot more examples, Allison, because it doesn't really need to be more complicated than that. I suggest putting Young Living or Downline in the Tag All, just because we don't always remember that we can actually search for customer type, which is a thing that's in the system, it's separate from tags, which is really cool for filtering. So definitely get in the habit of using that. You know, what, what you could do is, again, I would use, I would use it temporarily and based on the action you're looking to perform. Do you want to find your inactives, pull all of your actives, tag them as active, and then exclude from your group of, of, of people that you, that are Young Living, maybe? So everybody's tagged Young Living. Filter your VO for just the actives. Upload them with the tag Active, make it a temporary one, because you need to delete it, because not everybody's active forever, right? And then select all of those people who were not tagged as active in the Young Living group, tag them as inactive, and then reach out, right? Or just reach out. All right, so do you download and save report prior to uploading, save to desktop? Yeah, so when you download from your VO, it's just going to, for where, whatever device you're using, to whatever download place you like to put it, it's going to take a CSV file and drop it there. And then you don't have to touch it. You have to do a thing to it. You just take that and you upload it on, into your Get Oiling, and just follow the steps that we've done here today. Bailey, what is the best way to make a join my newsletter link? I want to have one on my Instagram link page. Yeah, landing page. Landing pages are super easy for this, really uncomplicated. So just make a landing page inside of Get Oiling, that's under Website, Landing Pages. Tell them what they'll get, when they can expect to hear from you. Is it weekly? Is it once a month? Macy's waving, hi Macy. Is it weekly? Is it once a month? You, you know, you just basically tell them that, and then make sure there's a tag on that landing page that's for newsletters, so you can find those people, or whatever the name of the newsletter is. And then maybe send them to a confirmation page that suggests that they join your Facebook group or whatever, right? And then have an email that sends out immediately, that's like, hey, you're on the list. Hey, reply and tell me something about you, because everything is about starting conversations, so that those people can become your members, right? And then, yeah, I would take the link to that landing page and put it in your link in bio. And if you want a link in bio, and you don't want to pay for it from somewhere else, you can make one with your Good Oil site, and we do have a YouTube video on that. Joanne, when filtering by postal code, can I use first few numbers so that I can get a list of those who live near me to invite to in-person classes? Really good question, Greg. Can you put in like the first three numbers?
You can. What it does, it searches for whatever you type in there, kind of anywhere in the field. So if you type in three numbers, it might match, like, kind of a metal, but this is a possibility. So this is something to keep in mind. You can, if you have multiple postal codes that you know about, you can actually comma separate them as well. So you could have, you know, five of them, just put commas in between, right? In the postal code box. And actually, the comma trick works for all the other fields that you can type text into, whether it's, you know, city or state or country or that sort of thing. So you can search that way if you'd like as well, so, yeah.
Awesome, great questions, you guys. Again, please remember to put them into the Q and A. So let's go ahead, I will definitely keep some space for Q and A here, but we do have a couple of, of live work to go through. Let me see, Joanne, I know you've already been asking questions, so I've seen you. So I'm going to go ahead and bring you out to talk. Excited to hear more about what kind of help you're looking for, so we can get you rolling in your business.
Hello.
Hi.
So I've had this program for a few years, and I initially downloaded my contacts, and I really haven't done much with it. So I'm just trying to get back to using it. I was wondering how I could use it as far as not just my Young Living team, but expanding on all my contacts, like, if I could download my contacts from my iPhone, you know, or from my Apple computer into it and use that for following up with people. And there's also another app called Contact Mapping. Are y'all familiar with the Contact Mapping app? Yeah, it's, it's an app that you use to do contacts, and it does, it does like the follow-up and the reminders and those kinds of things. And so I had downloaded it for that, but then I realized that y'all does that and a lot more. So instead of continuing to use the Contact Mapping, I'm wanting to switch back to y'all. So I didn't know if there's a way to download the information I had in Contact Mapping into your program.
Yeah, yeah, so in, in just about everything, you can download your Facebook contacts in a CSV format. There's an article on that, I think, in our Help Center. You can download from any contact manager that you use. You can download, export, I just look for export as, as sort of like a search term. And yes, as long as you're getting that in CSV format, then you're going to be able to upload that into your system. Just make sure, like I mentioned, if you're uploading from the VO, use Young Living, use Downline, things like that for everyone. I would also tag, if you're uploading from your iPhone, then, you know, have iPhone upload, just so that you know that that's where those contacts came from. Or Facebook friend, or something like that, if you're importing those contacts from Facebook.
Okay, so I can find instructions on how to do that and get my Facebook friends into a CSV file?
Yeah, yeah. It's, okay, it's not usually going to have contact information attached to it, especially after more recent privacy updates, there may not be any at all. But if you just wanted to have the names in there, so that, you know, if you're using Facebook, for instance, to communicate with people and prospect, and you want to keep notes, then they could already be in your system, and you can just go in and find them without having to create a new contact.
Yeah, because someone using through Messenger, but it'd be nice to have a place to put notes and follow-up reminders and stuff.
Yeah, yeah. So you had said, I think, as well, you're wanting to link pages together, and that you've got stuff from Grow Workspace and Simple Grace, and you've got Paula's pages, which are gorgeous. So I guess tell me a little bit about sort of what your goals are, and we can talk about how you can connect some of that stuff.
I didn't ask about.
Oh, that wasn't you, I'm sorry. In front of me, my bad, that's Donna, I'm talking to Donna in a minute. You want to find YouTube videos to get started managing contacts. Oh, this was timely, wasn't it? You didn't even know we were going to talk about contacts.
Yeah, and I did find one YouTube video that I watched, you know, last night and this morning. It was an hour long, so it kind of gave me some idea. So this was perfect, because I'm just trying to get started with using Get Oil to benefit me. And I, I think the first step's going to be using it for my contact manager, and eventually I'll get up to more fancy things with it. But if I could just get started with the contact manager, because I'm really trying to reach out more and do, I'm on a ninety-day run, so I'm trying to reach out to a lot of people. And I think it would be nice to have that organized. And if I could use it in this, I like the way I can send out emails and this and that directly from there and the reminders. It just seems like this is a much better platform for me to use that. And I've been paying for it for probably three years now, and I haven't been utilizing it, so.
Well, the, the best way, the best way to utilize this, if you're just getting started, is with your contacts all day. Because, I mean, people are the lifeblood of your business, right? You need them to, it's oil, we, we got to have people, oil's got to go on to somebody, right? So, so that the first thing that we really need to focus on is, is how we're managing our people and communicating with them. So that's, that's definitely the right place to start. So I'm glad that this was the day. If you have any other questions about that, like, you know, feel free to ask. But otherwise, you'll have all the slides from today's video that you could also use as sort of a guide for your VO uploads moving forward.
Cool, just one quick question. On the landing page, I have the, the part for them to put their information in to go further. And I really don't have a lot of people that are doing that. I don't know if I just don't have a lot of visits to my page, or people just start wanting to put their contact information in. Is it recommended to use that contact gatherer or not? Because, like I said, I haven't gotten a lot of response from that. And it could be just because I haven't got my page out.
Yeah, is, so you don't have a custom homepage, right? Like, you just, you have a built-in website theme?
Um, I did a little bit when I first got it a few years ago. I mean, I put my picture on there, and I did a little description thing. I did a few things with it.
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm looking at it now, yeah. So actually, if you're using the built-in website theme, it, it depends. I've talked about this a little bit in previous, previous trainings. Basically, if you want to, if you want to use your, your website as a sharing tool. So if you're actively prospecting, and you're setting an appointment, and they're going to review information, and what they're reviewing is your website, then a great thing you can do is to put this landing page up on the top. So they need to put their name and email in, but you're going to want to tell them that they need to do it, right? It's not, it's not really a passive activity. In most cases where we're asking for someone's name, email, phone, we need to have something that feels really compelling and specific and relevant to them. And so it could be that for your people, what's offered here on this landing page just isn't that. And so, you know, it's, it's fine to not have it, is, is point number one. And, and point number two, I would really be, you know, I'd be focusing on utilizing this page, specifically whatever built-in theme that you, you want to use as a sharing tool that's connected to appointments that you're making, right? So if you're having conversations with people, they're like, Joanne, I'm ready to learn about these oils, then you say, cool, let's sit down, how is three o'clock tomorrow? And they say, yes, you open your Zoom and get oiling, you get on Zoom together, or you sit down, you know, if you're, if you're neighbors or whatever. And then you, you open up your Good Oil website, and you scroll through, and you press play on the videos, and you have them watch, and you have them, you know, click links, ask questions, and engage in that way. So that's really what the, the built-in website themes are great for, is, is sort of being sharing tools. But no sharing tool is really very effective in, in this industry generally, without there being like a direct, like, relationship to the tool between you and that person. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, excellent. Okay, awesome, thank you for coming out today, and we look forward to seeing more of your great work.
And Joanne, I did do a quick search for you, and I put it in the chat. And it does say that you have to contact their contact, their support to get that export from them. It's not a self-serve feature, but will be soon. That's how you get your, your CSV file from them.
Good looking out. I hope you got that, Joanne, let us know if you did not. Where do you find the videos? Roberts, you can go to youtube.com/getoiling, and we have lots and lots, lots, lots of videos. We've just recently started sorting them into playlists, so if you want to learn about different things, specifically, you can do that there as well. All right, Donna, you are looking for a way to link pages together. Hi.
Hello.
Hi, all right, so let's talk. Tell me about what you're, you're hoping to connect and, and kind of what you've got going on.
Okay, well, I have a homepage that was from Paula, Beautiful Pages, but I wanted to have more of an introduction to myself, so I used the twenty-eight, twenty-eight to elevate, but I changed it to fourteen days of self-love, because I was doing that for the Valentine kind of theme, and I'm doing vision boards. So that's kind of my, my Zoom, that they come in to do a vision board, and then, so I have a bunch of links, but I'm not sure if they're getting to the right place, because it was the twenty-eight to elevate, so.
Okay, so this is working great, right here.
I think the, that fourteen days of self-love doesn't seem to be connecting, because I've had a few people come to it and do the, there. And then they're not getting the, they're not getting the sixteen messages that go with it, I don't think.
Oh.
Not quite sure why.
It's actually, it's going to this campaign page, so let's, let's check that out. Let's find. Let's find the self-love page, that's this one. And the settings here. Ah, yes, that's going to a campaigns.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I don't know how they had that set up originally. But what I would recommend is that you have a confirmation here or a thank you page.
Oh, okay.
I don't know. So there's in-person event module center. Chris, you've got some from Paula. So what I would recommend that you put here, and you could just be really, really simple with this, is is some kind of a confirmation page. And actually, like, let's just take them back to home for now. And I think that's this one, right? Or no, the beautiful, is it this one? Your homepage, this one, do you remember what it's called? That's okay, we'll figure it out here.
Yeah, homepage. And the other one is the custom homepage.
That's okay. Let's find it real quick. Oh, homepage template is the one that you're using right now.
Right.
So we'll just, for now, we're just going to send them to your homepage. But what I really recommend is that you actually redirect them to a homepage template is the one, yeah, so that you connect them to a confirmation page. Because after they have opted in, you know, you just want them to, A, know that they did it successfully and then B, know that they should go to their email right now to look for a confirmation from you.
Okay.
All right, so.
I have that with Paul's pages, I have.
That's right.
Way, but.
Okay, so this is correct, the tag is correct. It just, it was just going to the wrong, to the wrong page. So we can actually look at that campaign real quick. Yeah, so the fourteen days of self-love starts now. Let me check my email. I have got that email from you. So it is working. It was just redirecting to the wrong page.
Okay, so, because I put my information in to try to get it and I'm not getting it. So I wasn't sure why I'm not getting it, but.
Okay, well, I, I'm not sure, but I can tell you that the test that I just ran worked fine.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so let's see what else.
Yeah, then I have it again. And then I have going to the centering prayer. And I think that one's working. So it does. Yeah. So it goes to a PDF that I've saved, I think.
Okay, so this is actually, this is the page that we should be going to. So where you're going right now. Guide, let's see. Okay, yeah, no, so this is, what is centering prayer? How to begin? Wait, is this, is this the actual? I think this is the thing that you're giving away, right?
No, there's also a guide, another guide.
Okay, got you.
PDF that's saved in a PDF.
Okay, okay, so there's.
And that one does have a confirmation, I think, after they.
Okay, okay, great. I'm not, okay, so this is the landing page. So this is where we should be sending folks if they want the centering prayer. I think, I'm not really familiar with this super familiar just yet. So that's the landing page. I think there's, maybe there's several. No, that's the one.
And then there should be a confirmation page.
Mm-hmm, the confirmation is that one, yeah.
Right, yeah.
And then, and then there's the actual page. So this is, let me view this real quick.
That's just a short.
Well, so I actually, and Paula, if you're still here, maybe let me know. Send me a message here. Like, what is the order here? Do we go from landing page to the confirmation page? And then that centering prayer page comes via email? Because I feel like this is the page that we are sending folks to. No, maybe not. Okay, no, 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 I'm getting this now. I'm understanding this. Okay, this is correct. And so this is being sent via email, this PDF.
That's.
Excellent, okay.
And then I have one more, yeah, that can, the, the, going down, I have another page.
Hmm.
There, that one goes to Paula's beautiful pages.
Okay.
And then that one has the, get my free guide to. That one, yeah, that, but people aren't getting that.
But that, oh, you're saying that this isn't working yet?
Yeah, I don't think it is.
Okay.
Not sure why that link is not working. I tried to go to leads and figure it out, but.
Okay, so it doesn't appear to be, so it's staying on this page, which, which could be fine. I don't know if it's designed to do that. It could be that it needs to go to a confirmation page. I'm not a hundred percent sure. And I'll let you know if I get an email from it. But there may be some connecting that needs to be done there on the backend. And I'm, again, I'm not super familiar with, with, with Paula's pages. I know they're gorgeous, but I don't know them kind of in and out. I haven't worked with them yet.
So that's a campaign also that gives them an email. And then from the email is the connection to the, oh, it should go to the confirmation. It connects with the PDF for that.
Got you.
But they're not getting the PDF, so.
Okay, so the PDF should come via here. So this is the one, I believe, that you have connected there. It's this one.
Right, yeah.
Let's go to our settings and go to leads. Okay.
Because I think when I change things around, like I used to have that as my homepage. And then, oh, it does.
Hey, here, let me get out of.
Then I changed the other one to be my homepage, so maybe that changed.
Got you. Yeah, so it may be helpful for you to just change the name up a little bit so that it's a little more clear to you. Right? So you can change the name of it. I'll show you here in just a second. So if this one isn't going to be home, I would just change the name of this to, you know, what, whatever you'd like to call this page. And you can do that right here under Settings, Name, right there.
Maybe the Wellness, yeah.
Yeah.
Wellness or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, here, you know what, let's go ahead and do that. Okay, so Women's Wellness. So that, that'll just make it a little easier for you to know what's what.
Okay.
And we'll save that. And then from your homepage, let's just make sure that this is connecting properly. Okay, and I think that's this one homepage template. Yes, so I'm going to call, I'm just going to call this home. So that's super clear for you.
Okay, yeah.
All right, and then down here where we're offering.
Oh, the, the fourteen days.
No, this was, here, let's go look. Is it this one?
Yeah.
Come, okay, learning about natural living. Okay, so the learning about natural living should go to, what did we call that? We called that Women's Wellness.
Wellness, yeah.
And.
Which used to be the home template, yeah.
So we're going to click here, we're going to save. And now this should work the way you want it to. So let's go all the way down here, click here.
Okay.
And then we'll scroll down.
Oh, that, that's actually Paula's page, because I have.
Oh, so it's a different one.
Yeah, I had a different, I just put in a few different pictures.
Got you. So here's, here's what I would recommend, just to help make things simple for you, is I would go through the pages that you have, in particular, the ones that you've gotten from Paula, the ones that maybe were homepages, but maybe you want to use differently. I would go and rename them.
Okay.
Yeah, so so that it's really clear for you what they are. And here's the good news. When you go into Settings here, this name, you're the only person that's going to know what that is. Nobody's going to know what this is.
I see, oh.
You can give this any name that you want and that'll help this all make a lot more sense for you.
Okay, okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. I look forward to seeing more of what you bring together. I'm so excited that you have put Paula's great themes to use because her stuff is so pretty. I'm so excited for you guys to come out and learn more about that.
Thank you.
Have a great day. We'll talk soon.
Thank you so much.
All right, you guys, thank you for sticking around. We appreciate you so much for being here, each and every one of you. We're back here same time next week. Keep an eye out for your email for the replay. And then, of course, if you're watching this as a recording, make sure to check the description and get today's slides so that you can walk through step by step how to be doing these uploads on a regular basis. Thank you, guys. We'll see you next week.